Please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and also for those who have passed away in our community.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahan?
Mr. Rexler? Here. Mr. Gahan is absent tonight due to an illness.
I make a motion to appoint Councilman Perry as temporary chairperson for the Committee on Public Works.
Second. On the question, calls in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. The ayes have it so move. Do any councilmen have announcements at this time?
I have one. The Seventh Annual Bonfire at the Iron Furnaces will take place next Saturday, October 21st, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM at the historic Scranton Iron Furnaces located close to downtown at 159 Cedar Avenue in South Scranton, right off exit from 81 and near Coney Island. The bonfire will be lit at 8:00 PM. The Bonfire Festival, a fundraiser for the Anderside Heritage Museum, explores the roots of Halloween and Celtic culture and celebrates other cultural autumn festivals while highlighting northeastern Pennsylvania's industrial past.
Yes, and I also have an announcement to make. The Scranton Police Department Fighting for Your Cure spaghetti dinner is underway. It started on the 8th and is going to run through October 22nd. It's 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM daily. It's at Fortelli's Restaurant on Providence Road. Tickets are on sale for $12. It's eat in, take out, and as always, all the proceeds go to the American Cancer Society.
And as a reminder, on October 22nd, there will be a benefit for Elaine Novembreno-Hug. She is the daughter of City Controller Roseanne Novembreno. The benefit will be held at Kill Coins from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Dispenser reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, Tax Assessors, excuse me, Tax Assessors Results Reports, four hearing dates held September 27 and September 28, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B Minutes of the regular meeting of the members of the Scranton Housing Authority held September 6, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3C Tax Assessors Report, four hearing date to be held October 19, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3D Breakdown of the Eligible Salaries for the Liquid Fuels Account for the Months of July, August, and September, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. And since we already did announcements?
Fourth order, Citizens Participation.
Dave Frannis, Scranton. Mayor Bill Cartwright reelection campaign includes billboards and mailers which claim that he has created more progress in three years than in the previous 20 years. Let's take a closer look at the real progress of Mayor Bill Cartwright. Tax increases. Since January 2014, the day Bill Cartwright took the oath of office as mayor, our property taxes have increased 82 percent. According to the Scranton Times, Scranton now has the highest taxes of all cities, boroughs, and townships in Lackawanna County. Three former and current city council allies of Mr. Cartwright gifted him with a 46 percent tax increase to kick off his first day in office, and together they kept that tax ball rolling until reelection year 2017. However, while slapping Scranton taxpayers with annual increases, not once did he approach wealthy Scranton nonprofits for payments in lieu of taxes. Fee hikes. In January 2014, our garbage fee increased from $178 to $300 annually. Despite Scranton City Council stating that this garbage fee increases excessively high and is study being undertaken, Mayor Cartwright has refused to decrease it to a fair and justifiable dollar amount. Sadly, citizens must sue the Cartwright administration, hire legal representation, and fight this mayor in court to pursue accurate decreases in garbage and rental registration fees. Asset giveaways. Bill Cartwright gifted a downtown parking garage to the owner of the Steamtown Marketplace. In addition, he gave profitable parking meters to the nonprofit that assumed control of city parking garages. Sweetheart deals. Mayor Cartwright gave extended lucrative contracts to police and fire unions, assuring fat salaries and comfortable benefits through 2021 on top of their massive $30 million court award. But the biggest backroom deal of all time was the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority. Mayor Cartwright states we have $140 million in required sewer upgrades, yet he doesn't tell us that the Sewer Authority completed $26 million in upgrades before the sale. Thus, the more accurate dollar amount is $114 million in required upgrades, not $140 million. Mayor Cartwright hired a city attorney and campaign contributor to represent our city in the sewer sale with a wink and a handshake rather than a legal contract. Attorney's fees for this sale are approximately $3.1 million, yet the mayor never accounted for these hefty payments through the public. Relatives of Mayor Bill Cartwright, City Council Solicitor Amo Menora, Judge Carmen Menora, who will hear a Sewer Authority-related case, and Dunmore Council Solicitor Cummings, or employees of Pennsylvania state agencies which had been requested to investigate the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority by both Scranton City and Dunmore Councils, and to this very day, no one knows where the Sewer Authority, whether rather, the Sewer Authority continues to legally exist or was dissolved in December 2016. The Cartwright Stormwater Fee. Since Mayor Cartwright didn't include the stormwater system in the sale of the Sewer Authority, it became the city's responsibility, which actually means it becomes the rate payer's problem. But Bill Cartwright never talks about the new fee he created and never includes it in his campaign ads. He's hoping we will forget about it until after the November election. The Cartwright Stormwater Fee will be his legacy as mayor. This new fee will arrive in the mail at some point following this election year and will continue long after Bill Cartwright leaves office. The Cartwright Stormwater Fee is a forever fee that never should have happened to us. This is Mayor Bill Cartwright's real progress. An 82 percent tax increase, a $300 garbage fee, asset giveaways, sweetheart deals, and the Cartwright Stormwater Fee. Can we afford four more years of Bill Cartwright? Thank you.
Joan Hoda-Wannett, Scranton taxpayer and resident. Twenty-six days to November 7th general election. I do hope that all registered voters come out and vote. I would also hope, I don't expect this, but I would hope to see the results of the Arcataz study released, if not before the election, soon thereafter. We need to know what we're looking at in terms of costs. If during fifth order you have the information, I'd be interested in whether or not the Noel's Insurance List is available yet, and I would also be interested in knowing if the administration has decided to accept VOCAB, Vocational Rehabilitation Incorporated bid to be the independent medical examination coordinator so that the money from the sewer sale can flow into the pension funds, if we have any status on that, since that has to be done first. Last Saturday, I went to the University of Scranton to attend one of the information sessions on reassessment, and I was extremely disappointed because there were all of 20 people there. And I know maybe people are getting tired of election season already, or they're just throw up their hands in dismay that, you know, it doesn't make any difference what they think. But I would remind people, you know, that we get what we vote for, and if we as voters do not stand up and make our voices heard, then we deserve what we get. On October 25th, the university will have a, it's actually, I think the League of Women Voters will sponsor at the university a mayoral debate between Mayor Cartwright and Attorney Mulligan, and I do hope more than 20 people show up for it. You know, these things are very important. There doesn't seem to be much controversial matter on today's agenda, so I'm just going to end with an observation that it's 26 days to the election, but I assume that the budget process is well underway for the city's 2018 budget, and that should be landing somewhere in your lap in the month of November, I assume. And what I'm concerned about is all the potential landmines that the city still faces that can upset any budget planning or impact on the city's credit rating, not the least of which is potential stormwater management costs, the fate of the Sewer Authority sale, whether or not that will be challenged in court and made null and void, and a number of other lawsuits that the city is facing. The Act 511 tax lawsuit, the refuse fee, the rental registration fee, and even the double pensioners who are suing to maintain their right to receive their double pensions for the rest of their lives. On top of that is the hole that the Scranton School District seems to find itself in, and the real possibility that their $40 million hole may grow to $47 million by the end of the year. So that's why I would really hope that the voting public pays attention to these issues, attends debates, watches council meetings, watches school district meetings, and even the budget presentation tomorrow for the county, and then makes their voices heard at the ballot box on November 7th. You know, because I know that it's hard to change the inertia of Scranton and City Hall, but shame on us if we simply give up our right to cast a ballot. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Well, I guess the first thing is, I'd like to thank anybody tonight who's watching this meeting or will watch it in the near future. But it's my opinion that the city is going to lose every single one of these cases that were just mentioned here today. Not just some of them, but every single one. And the sad part is, you know, that I'm sure that Mr. Cartwright has a role to play in some of that, but the reality of most of it is that really, city councils left us down for a couple decades, and, you know, it's just a shame that the residents in this city just weren't smart enough to understand that this wasn't a comedy show and this was real life. And the people who have been denied everything are the residents in the neighborhoods. The grant money is going everywhere except to them, basically, and you have to ask yourself, what would lead a people to have so little faith in their elected government? They don't even participate in elections. And I guess if you were to take a look at the performance of this council and even our government in general, it's not hard to understand why. I'm just wondering, you know, how much pain can a city endure? Because I don't want to reach into a partisan position here in between Mr. Mulligan or Mr. Cartwright, because to me, I'm not sure either one of these gentlemen are leaders, and I don't think that one of them has any clue how to turn this city around, and I don't think that any of the five council members do either, because we've just played politics in this city for so long that we think it's a carnival sideshow. And the reality of it all is being debated in the courts. Only that isn't so much of a carnival sideshow. Maybe the Court of Common Pleas may be to a small degree, but the upper court, when they reach that, is going to have to stand on case law, and it's not going to be pretty. And I really appreciate the people that have challenged the city in court, and I can tell you that you are going to win. Everything that's coming, that's gone into court up to this point, you will win it. You may not win it at the Court of Common Pleas, but on appeal you will, depending on the competence of your attorney and his argument. And you know, the sad part is that this council just voted for so many things that were detrimental to the residents of this city, and they aren't going to yield any kind of dividend to the residents, because if this American water sale is overturned by the court, I don't know where all that money's coming from. Okay, to pay all that money back to the authority, and then you can't, after the authority's dissolved, move it out of there and spend it wherever you want, because it has to go into the stormwater collection system somewhere. Scranton Times has presented that argument, so I just don't understand how the council, first of all, introduced the legislation to divest the residents of their asset, the Scranton Sewer Authority, and how the council didn't understand what the law was and what the ramifications of the law were. And I wouldn't try to hide behind your council, because you have a larger obligation than that. And I just think that if the residents are silly enough to retain any of the city's councilmen in the next election, they're out of their mind. But then, they've been out of their mind for a long time, and I think it's time to ask why none of the city pools that have been closed for years have been fixed yet. And where's the investment in the neighborhoods? Do the residents in this city have any right to any investment in their neighborhoods? And you know, the last thing that I'd like to see challenged in court is I'd like the people that had their homes condemned here to go into court and challenge the city on the condemnations, and bring the condemnation book into the courthouse and take a good hard look at the reasons why the homes were condemned and the homes that aren't even listed in the book that were condemned, and question the whole thing. And let's see if the city has pockets deep enough to pay all the money that it's going to end up losing, because it's ultimately going to come out of the residents, and these are the councilmen that ran publicly to represent you, and they've done a just terrible job. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. As usual, I'm not prepared. Many years ago, my father told me, "People forget all the good things that you do and remember that one regrettable mistake." I don't remember. I'd done something stupid, and he told me, called me a fool. He said, "One of the worst things in the world is a fool." Last week, Mr. Bolus stood before this council, this whole city, and the speakers had made a spectacle of himself that was completely unnecessary about a bunch of unsubstantiated nonsense, complaining about a double hospitalization. But one of his complaints was the $110 an hour Mr. Mulligan received from the Sewer Authority for, I think he worked there six, seven years. I don't, I don't remember. But if you compare that to Mr. Cartwright's friend, Abra Hansom, they got $850 an hour for crying out loud. $850 an hour, and look at what happened. Look at the results, the product of that $850 an hour job they did. If they tried to be, make a mess worse than they got, they couldn't have done any worse. The city would be years, your grandchildren were trying to overcome what happened with the Sewer Authority deal, believe me. There've been a lot smarter people than me. My friend in Little Rock that sells stocks and bonds, he told me that, he said, "This could go on for people's lifetimes. It's such a mess." Mr. Bolus might reside in Scranton, but he is definitely not a taxpayer. He owes the city of Scranton, Dunmore, and Troop over $300,000. I've been saying for the last couple weeks, "Well, you owe such great sums of money," like all these property owners around the mall downtown, there's dozens of them, all these people on Cedar Avenue that were the bright star in our mayor's eye, "They shouldn't be allowed to have a vote in city politics till they do something, make some token payments or something." Why should these people out here at me, like I've said, pay our taxes and somebody owes? There's, there's quite a few of them, owe more than $50,000, $100,000. Why does it just keep dragging on year after year and nothing being done? One reason, nothing done, these are the supporters of our mayor. I guess he just relishes on people like this. Well, I have some, let me remind the mayor and all his unscrupulous administration and these no-tax-paying supporters of his, that the FBI people are still over there on Blueberry Hill in Duryea, very much alive. That's their black Chevy Tahoe that goes downtown and doesn't put money in the parking I know, I saw the car last year by the annex with all these guys in their black suits and sunglasses. I looked at them and they looked at me. I don't know which one of us was funnier on the street. All that, all that I can see to come out of this, this election is, it's going to be evil and costly if Mr. Mulligan doesn't get in, and it's completely unknown if he does get in, but my property values have sunk something terrible because of the, this administration allowing my neighborhood to completely just go to pot. The zone opened and the most undesirable bunch of human dung humanly possible is hanging around Main and Market. Nobody would want them in their neighborhood. Nothing's done about them. My house values are probably $20,000 less than they should be. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Marie Schumacher. Starting off, is it accurate that you are keeping the building, the lot at Wyoming and Linden on the table?
It's on, it's, it's off the table for right now.
It is off the table?
It's on, I'm sorry, it's on the table.
Oh, okay. And it's going to stay there?
It's table, I guess is the best way.
Yeah, okay. What is the status of a meeting with DEP? Has anybody met with DEP?
I met with them this week. I met with them this week.
And there's no conclusion?
No, go ahead. I'll mention it.
You're going to cover it? Okay. What about the parking authority of the parking garages? I noticed in today's legal, legal notices, there were requests for proposals and going to Denman, who did the affordability study for the leasing, for upgrades and modifications. Is my understanding that we pay for that in the parking garages? We pay for any maintenance or?
No, they're doing that.
Pardon?
ABM is doing that with NDC. In fact, they're in the process now of changing on all of the ticket machines and the gates at every garage, and they're, and they're paying for that.
So we, we have no responsibility for any modifications to those garages? I thought we did.
Well, there's some things written, yeah, there's a couple things written in there. We have a grant that we have that could be used for some of those repairs.
But how many of, of what was in the legal notice today? Did you see that?
No, I didn't see it.
Okay. I'd like to know how much, if there's an estimate of what that's going to be in the, in the budget this year. And also, Mr. Rexler, when is that meeting? We've almost through another, we're through another month?
Yeah, I just got an email earlier this week that the date is being firmed up, so I will know something better next week. We're just trying to get everybody on the page. I know I responded that I was able to attend, and there's some people that they were still waiting to hear from, so I'll have a better answer for you next week.
Okay.
But it is, there is a tentative date, but I don't want to give out the tentative date.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's okay. Okay, SAPA, that included a lot on stormwater and regionalization. Could we get Mr. King in here to make a presentation to us, an update on what SAPA is doing with respect to stormwater?
I would think we are going to be quite busy between now and the end of the year getting the budget, so it's something that probably we could have the county come in with, Mr. King, but I don't see that happening between now and budget time.
That's unfortunate.
I think the budget is our priority right now.
We're less than five weeks away, right?
Mm-hmm.
Speaking of the budget, I, as you know, I track the property sales, and it was interesting, and I hope that in this budget, we will have, we will go to taxation or millage based on the total assessment. There were two properties in yesterday's, I believe it was, yesterday's notices. Total for both was $16,000, and one was 34 percent higher than the other property because of the variations in the land and the improvements. And again, we are the only municipality in the entire county that splits. Every place I've ever been, when they did tax land differently, it was to induce people to develop it, and so it was worth doing, but, you know, A, nobody really wants to develop very much here, and B, there's not a lot of it out there. So I would like a reason, if it's not in the budget, why we're, why we're staying with the split.
I'll get the, I'll get the reason for you, because you have discussed that previously with the administration, so I'll get that for you.
The administration what?
I'll get the reason for you, because I'm a proponent of doing exactly that, and I was told that it was going to be more difficult than we thought, so I'll find out what the actual reasons are.
Okay. And have we waived, we as a city waived the fees for the work being done at Mr. Vassaliga's establishment? I go there every week, and I have yet to see a building permit posted.
I'm not aware of any. I'm not aware of any fees being waived.
I stopped in the office and I asked if they had them there, and it was like, no. So, have they?
No, in fact, in fact, early around this year, work was stopped because there were no permits, and they had to get them, so, I don't know, I know in the spring or whenever, earlier this year, work was stopped and they had to get permits. I know that that happened.
Okay. Okay. Guess it's a good place to stop. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Kara Sitzinger, City of Scranton resident, member of the Greenridge Neighborhood Association. I just want to say we had a fabulous weekend in Greenridge. I don't know, I didn't get to the festival until 3:00. My daughter came in from college, I had to get her at the airport. But we personally, the Neighborhood Association, last year when we got involved, we didn't do it for profit. We did it because it was their first annual festival, and we wanted to be a presence there. So this year, we wanted something different to give the other business owners, to attract them to come, and maybe even invest in the city or in Greenridge itself. So we had a farmer who just became an orchardist who made apple cider, and it was unbelievable the amount of money he made, and he took that profit home. We also, last evening, had many, many people from the city, different parts of the city, a lot from Greenridge, come out to meet the candidate night, and I appreciate very much the various neighborhood presidents that came, the various residents, and the candidates who are running for office. And it was a good night, and I think it was a healthy exchange of ideas, and informative to everyone. But I don't think that we should talk about politics at a city council meeting, so that's all I mean to say about that. And then Tuesday came, and I just, I really briefly want to talk about Tuesday. I think that you all could agree that I have been here and I have talked, both here and at the Scranton Sewer Authority Town Hall, about Glenn Street, about leachage, about questions that we had about the sewer authority deal. The Greenridge Neighborhood Association, in the past four years, was revived after Jimmy Dempsey died. We have tried to help and cultivate a good exchange of ideas and to help our neighbors. And we've partnered with the Business Association, the Greeners Little League, to have an Easter egg this hunt, the Fall Fest, the Christmas event, and some people are saying that they didn't know about contamination. And I'm going to tell you that we didn't know about contamination. What we did know is that a neighbor, a young mother, brought her children to the park on September 23rd. She sent me texts when she was standing on the top of the mound of debris that was pipes. I personally showed them to Chief Graziano, he and Denny Gallagher went there, they looked at it. I'm going to take you back a month to August, when another member of the Greenridge Neighborhood Association came to my house on a Sunday morning and told me that leachate ponds were being built on Glenn Street. I didn't have the answers, and that's why I asked, both here and at the Sewer Authority Town Hall, because we didn't know it was being built at the time. From that point, I took several photos, I had looked at it, we don't know it was dumped there. What we do know is that Sewer Authority employees came to us and told us that they personally on that site, with gloves, going through that contaminated land. What we did is we handed it over to DPW and to the police chief. Mark Sitzinger is not the mayor of the city of Scranton. I think he made that clear. I'm not the mayor of the city of Scranton. Jim Mulligan is not the mayor of the city of Scranton. He was the former neighborhood association that led us in the leachage fight. We have spent money and time tirelessly. We are out there every day, trying to make our city better. September 23rd, when we discovered the dumping, September 24th, we all went up there and we cleaned that park. We didn't go near the dumping, because that was to be removed by the Sewer Authority, we were told, on the 23rd. We went up and we cut the bushes, did the grass, because as we have always said, a good neighbor, if you have a vacant lot, clean it up. It helps blight. So I just wanted to just put it on the record. We're not going to take the rap for this. We absolutely won't. And if the city administration dropped the ball, that is not on the Greenridge Neighborhood Association. And I just would hope that you gentlemen would look into it, because we welcome the park. We absolutely welcome it. We are grateful for the money. We were a little bit confused at the fact that there was a press conference when we're holding an account, the Greenridge Neighborhood account, a $7,500 grant for that park from the Lackawanna County Commissioners, yet we weren't told about this press conference. And yet, I received a phone call from a Greenridge mother in my office around 11:30 saying, hey, come on out to Crowley Park, there's a big announcement. I asked her how she knew, and she told me a friend that I work with works for Mayor Courtwright, and texted me, will I get in trouble if I give her name? I said, no, and I will not give her name, but it's a member of his cabinet. So that being said, again, I just, we really are not out to hurt anybody, we're out to help people. And it takes a lot of time and a lot of effort that I certainly don't have. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Fifth order, private motions.
Mr. Perry?
Yeah, just a couple of brief items. The Arcadia study was brought up. I haven't had a recent update on that, so if we can get something out to Mr. Bolzoni and see if we have one of the more recent updates, that way we have something to share next time it comes up, which I agree. There was two issues that we were working on last week, both were waiting for resolution on. One was the Mayorfield drainage situation, and the other one was the drain grate that is on top of Elizabeth Street in West Side, up by the Tri-Park area. And lastly, normally, I try not to get too caught up with he said, she said types of discussions, but this one seemed too serious, and I just didn't want to let it go. Mr. Elman, I think you actually touched on it today, and that was some of the speaker's claims last week about Mr. Mulligan. I don't agree that it was the right form to bring that up. It's definitely not. This is about city business. He has every right to defend himself if he wishes, but he almost shouldn't have to. But it's hard to defend yourself against something that's been already said. Attorney Minara, if you don't mind, I would just like your help, because Mr. Bolus last week said some things, and you know, he threw out some legal codes, and he, you know, he basically said Mr. Mulligan, was illegal. I can't say one way or the other. So if you would just kind of help work with me with that, I'll get with you after, and we'll just see, because I don't want this to go on any further than it has to, because I can see it just going back and forth. And equally, if nothing illegal was done, then everybody needs to know that as well. It should not go on week after week, because I can see this just bubbling up, and I don't want it to.
Sure.
So normally, I don't, I don't want to get involved, but like you said, Mr. Elman, I'm not sure, it definitely wasn't the right area for this, but this, if this is something that's not going to be addressed and put to bed, this is going to, something that's just going to go on, and there's no need to, not, not right now, not in this form. And that's, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Mr. Rogan?
Yes, just two items tonight. The first is, and we did discuss this a little bit in our caucus, the property downtown that has been talked about quite a bit, that the city possibly may be acquiring, is still going to remain tabled, as Councilman Wexler mentioned, and I am still looking into a way of putting that property on the market to be developed, with the idea of the park being the last resort. As I mentioned, I would really like to see that land remain on the tax rolls, and it is a prime piece of downtown real estate that hopefully can be developed. So that's something I'm continuing to work on, as I know Councilman Wexler is working on the DEP issues regarding that plot of land. Secondly, regarding the Veterans Memorial Park that was talked about at the last couple of weeks, we did receive correspondence, two pieces of correspondence on this actually. The first one was from Pat Ahern, just giving some additional information about the project, and I will read that letter, and then I will talk a little bit more on the actions that the city, OECD, has taken on this as well. So this was actually sent to the mayor's office, and they asked that city council was copied. So it says, "The Veterans Committee has been diligently working with Tom McLean, our project architect, to get the best design possible for the best cost. We've made great progress. We have great design, as you saw at our presentation. The design as it stands now, we estimate will cost in the $450,000 range. McLean Associates is working on a detailed cost and spec sheet for the plan. We already have the land and the first $100,000 to complete Phase 1, so the total amount to finish the project is around $350,000. We could do this in additional phases. After Phase 1, the park is ready for visitors to enjoy the landscaping. Each additional phase will add an educational element to the park. We could add benches, flagpoles, pedestal leading stations with black granite plaques to educate the public. We could add the monument lighting and security cameras. We could add these at one or more at a time. While adding these items," and this is in bold, "the park will continue to be open. Many items in a phase depend upon how much money is committed to spend. All these additional items, we refer to as the amenities of the park, and that will make it a true Veterans Memorial Park. We appreciate your time and effort in helping us complete this long overdue recognition of our brave men and women from Scranton who sacrificed their lives in defense of freedom." Again, that was from Pat Ahern, who was at our meeting a few weeks ago. That was sent, I believe it was October 10th, on the, also, the same day, correspondence was drafted from the OECD office to HUD. As Linda Abley mentioned at our, at our forum, we had, there are a number of regulations that there possibly need to be, some exceptions made to be, in order to fund this project. I'm not going to read through this entire letter, because it is about 10 pages long, but it does go through and asks for that exemption. The letter from OECD goes on and mentions that it was not in our five-year consolidated plan, as Ms. Abley mentioned at our meeting, and it says, "In good faith, she agreed at council's request to contact the HUD field office to discuss and determine if there's something that our office can do to assist with this activity." Ms. Abley does feel that this item is not eligible, but it is going to HUD for a review. So we will wait to hear back from HUD on this item. Hopefully, it is eligible and it can be funded. If not, I think we should certainly be looking for other ways of funding those projects. It does sound like it would be not only a great park for the public to enjoy, but something that is educational as well. That is all for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogan. Mr. Evans?
Thank you. I'll be brief, I promise. First of all, for the record, this councilman found out about the plans for Crowley Park when I read the news story in this grant times. That's the first time I heard anything about it. Also, it's my understanding that Mr. Chuck Volby will go to court next week to challenge the county's reassessment ballot question. So good luck, Mr. Volby, on that. In the meantime, I'm going to continue to talk about reassessment, but tonight I'm not going to talk about, I'm going to talk not about the facts or figures, or how much it's going to cost or not going to cost. I want to make an appeal to the voters about this issue. Election Day is less than four weeks away, and the two days of informational sessions are over. So here we are at a crossroads of our decision-making process. And I want the voters to know that despite a complicated ballot question crafted to drive a no vote, the question of should the county do a reassessment really isn't that complicated. If you vote yes for reassessment, you are voting for tax equity on every property and for every property owner in Lackawanna County. It can't get much simpler than that. And if you vote no, you're voting for the status quo, which is a broken system of tax inequity. It is a system that for decades favored the rich and the connected, while the not-so-rich, the senior citizens, and the less connected, just continue to do what they have always done, not complain, and pay what they thought was their fair share, never appealing an assessment that hadn't changed in over 50 years. I think we all know what the right thing is, but by crafting this question and placing it on the ballot, there are those that are trying to divide the voters in an attempt to avoid doing what is clearly their responsibility. So when it comes time to vote on reassessment, don't vote your own self-interest. Don't vote out of fear of the unknown, and don't vote out of fear of change. Because sometimes, you just have to do what you think is the right thing to do. So I'm asking you on Election Day, less than four weeks away, to vote yes for reassessment. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Just to touch on the meeting that was held yesterday, there was a meeting with Business Administrator Bolzoni, George Kelly from the county, representatives from DEP, Leslie Collins from Scranton Tomorrow, Mrs. Reed, and Denny Gallagher, and myself attended the meeting. The meeting basically was to get an understanding of the county's role in establishing remediation efforts at the Wyoming Avenue site. What we learned was that there's really two forms of remediation. One would be to remediate the property for residential use, and then the other remediation would be anything else, including the green space and a commercial building. The county has taken on the responsibility of working with an engineering firm who is in contact with the Environmental Protection Agency, and they are determining what type of remediation has to be done at that site. At the end of that study, we will have a number that will say remediation for a green space is X dollars, and remediation for a commercial site is Y dollars. Somewhere in between, we'll have those numbers so we can make a final determination on, is it better to proceed as a green space for that area, or as has been suggested, do we keep considering it for a commercial property? The feedback that I got from the meeting was that the state, the state itself is more interested in returning these brownfields to green space. There is a demand for green space in the area, but for us to do our due diligence, as Councilman Rogan has asked us to do, we are going to proceed to make sure that we make the true determination on the cost of remediation, that we make the best decision for that property. While we were at that meeting, I also discussed the PP&amp;L project on West Mountain, there's been some questions about that. After some conversations, what we found out is that the County Conservation District has been really responsible for monitoring the plans. Director Gallagher has been on site, he has seen the system of retention ponds that have been developed on the West Mountain. According to him, it's a quite sophisticated labyrinth of retention ponds to keep the water on that mountain. So we will be in contact with the County Conservation District to see what input they have, but the feeling right now is that the PP&amp;L is proceeding with that project in accordance with county and federal standards. Yesterday, we received a contract that's going to be awarded to LaBelle Company. They're going to do an analysis on the material that was found out at Crowley Park. They are going to work on that for a fee of $1,950, and they're going to review with different stakeholders to gather information on how the material got there, who put it there, what kind of material it is, and then they will make a determination on whether if it's hazardous or not, and then it will be dealt with in a manner to correct the condition that it's in. So that is something that should give everyone these, hopefully, it's not contaminated material, hopefully it's just clean fill that was used, and the project can move on unimpeded. Just one more announcement, I just, I'm not a good reader of the, of the legal notices as Mr. Lockwood is and Ms. Schumacher is, but I just want to read this. For people that are interested in attending sewer authority meetings, the notice was posted that the remaining regular meetings of the Board of the Scranton Sewer Authority of Scranton for calendar 2017, they moved them from Fridays, currently right now, they're going to be held on the third Thursday of each month, and shall be held as follows. Thursday, October 19th, Thursday, November 16th, and Thursday, December 14th at 4:00 PM in the governor's room. So if you're interested in attending sewer authority meetings, they're not going to be the third Thursday at 4:00 PM in the governor's room. That's all I have.
5B, for introduction and resolution, appointment of Reverend Rebecca A. Barnes, 801 Wheeler Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18510, as a member of the Human Relations Commission effective October 3, 2017. Reverend Rebecca A. Barnes will be replacing Robert Johns, who resigned on September 7, 2017. Reverend Barnes will fill the unexpired term of Robert Johns, which is scheduled to expire on August 24, 2018.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, item 5V, be reintroduced into its proper committee. Summum. Second, on the question, yes, I've become quite good friends with Reverend Barnes. She is an asset to our community, and she will be an asset to this committee. All who are in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the ayes. Have it, summum.
5C, for introduction and resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials for the city of Scranton to enter into a loan-to-grant agreement and make a loan grant from the city of Scranton Business and Industry Loan Grant Program for project number as noted in an amount not for project number, as noted, in an amount not to exceed $25,000 to the Bootneys Cultural Foundation of Scranton Association to assist an eligible project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, item 5C, be introduced into its proper committee. So moved. Second. On the question? All is in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Epstein.
The ayes have it, so moved.
5D for introduction of resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an agreement for the collective bargaining agreement by and between the City of Scranton, NDC, ABM and, and Teamsters Local 229, in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement with an effective date of January 1, 2017 and ratified by the membership.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, item 5B, be introduced into its proper committee. So moved. Second. On the question? All is in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, Resolution Number 197, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with McCarthy Tire Service to provide new tires for city-owned vehicles for the period January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2018.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As temporary chair for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, Resolution Number 198, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with De Naples Towing Incorporated to provide towing services for city-owned vehicles for the period January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2018.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As temporary chair for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, Resolution Number 199, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with the Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company to provide retread tires for city-owned vehicles for the period January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2018.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As temporary chair for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Meeting is adjourned.